All right, I'm gonna call to order this joint meeting with the Town and Town Council and the Planning and Zoning Committee on August 25th, 2021, 7:00 PM. We are here tonight to discuss the Connecticut State Senate Bill 1201, which is an act concerning responsible and equitable regulation of adult use cannabis, and determine how to proceed for future rules and regulations, ordinances, or policies regarding cannabis in Talon. So tonight, I think, is a joint meeting for us to sit down and kind of level set what we as a town have to do to either approve or not approve, and what the process is gonna be, and how we're gonna get the public involved, and just kind of have that first discussion and maybe set a plan for how we want to move forward. There is no public participation tonight because this is a working group for all of us to go through it. I expect that as we move forward, we would definitely want to engage the public, whether it's a public hearing or community conversations, and then decide on the path going forward. So tonight, it's just for all of us to talk and get that first, kind of the first read of everything, and set an agenda for us going forward. With that, David, if you would like, would it be easier for you? You had a really good summary in here to kind of go over what you have pulled up from the legislation.
Yeah, well, I think we should go around.
So we just at least introduce everybody, so for those who are on the TV there. So should we start with Deb?
Yeah.
Yep.
Deb Gaff, Planning and Zoning Commission.
And Bruce Mayer, Vice Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Lisa Hancock, Interim Town Manager.
Bill Bodie, Town Council.
Andy Powell, Planning and Zoning Chair.
Tandy Nuccio, Town Council Chairwoman.
Kurt Jenner, Town Council.
John Regan, Town Council.
David Corcoran, Planning Director.
Mrs. Jensen's head clerk.
Thank you, Andy. And then if we wanna go through the officials that are online, I'm gonna call out your names, and then you can introduce yourself. Brenda.
Brenda Felucy, Town Council.
Eve.
Steve Jones, Vice Chair, Town Council.
Joe.
Joe Mateus, Planning and Zoning.
Uh, no.
No. Aaron.
No, we just called her.
No, no.
Oh, sorry. Aaron Stavens, Planning and Zoning.
Tom.
John Crickmore, Planning and Zoning.
And then I see Trooper Eckland.
Yes, I am here.
Okay. So I think that's all of the people that are on boards and commissions. The rest is just public at least part.
Yep.
Okay. All right. David, take it away.
All right, absolutely. So, thanks, everybody. So, as we all know, we're here today to talk about the cannabis bill that recently passed that enables recreational cannabis within communities in Connecticut. So what I am gonna kind of focus on is the portions that have to do with the legality of the signing and sale of recreational cannabis in Talon based on the passage of this bill. So where we're at is kind of by default, if we don't do anything, recreational cannabis will become legal within Talon. But with some safeguards around it that are in place within the, within the bill, among them that it requires some sort of affirmative approval, which can be a special permit, is, is within the, within the bill. But also, there's some restrictions on signage around schools and activities like that. And, you know, it is forbidden within the state statute to, you know, have really sort of obnoxious signage or very loud signage, you know, boldly advertising cannabis. So it has to be somewhat subdued within the way the bill is written. Since we have less than 25,000 people, we're only allowed to approve up to one retailer and one micro cultivator until 2024, at which time the state government will do some fancy math and determine if that's still the case, and regulate it that way. We do have full ability to regulate this via zoning. The bill is very clear that it gives Town Council and Planning and Zoning both the ability prohibit this entirely, I guess on one end. Town Council can do that via ordinance, Planning and Zoning can do it via listing it as a prohibited use everywhere within our zoning regulations, effectively barring it by not allowing it in any zones. But then between there, between us doing nothing and between prohibiting the, you know, there's a whole bunch of different approaches we could take. I think Planning and Zoning did a great job a couple years ago with medical marijuana and developed regulations that do restrict these facilities from being within 100 feet of schools or daycares, making sure that their license of the state outlining which zones might be appropriate for medical. And maybe that's a good framework to start the discussion if that's, if that's pretty well our kind of leaning. But ultimately, we have full flexibility to determine, from a zoning perspective, where they can go, how they can be cited. We have the protections of the state statute, we kind of help out with signage. And then we have the ability to regulate business hours if that's something that we wanted to do. So I looked at the list of cross referrals this morning just to see kind of what other towns are doing. It looks like East Haven Park, Newington, and Marston are in the process updating their zoning regulations to allow for recreational cannabis. And then there's 11 other towns that are enacting temporary moratoriums while they determine what they want to do. Of those 11 towns, they tend to be six to four month moratoriums. A moratorium is that, any sort of emergency moratorium, the way it functions, this is a text amendment to the zoning regulations wherein essentially we pass an amendment to the zoning regulations that prohibits them with a sunset date associated with that. So that's another possible approach that we could take. So with that, I'm happy to leave it to you all and answer any questions.
Okay. So I think the best way to do this is just, as like that we're in a meeting, anybody in the room who wants to speak, just kind of indicate that you wanna speak. And anybody who's online, we can just do the raise hand, and I'll go around the room and then hear everybody on the computer. I do have, I do have some questions too, but I'm gonna wait to see what everybody else asks first.
John.
Pardon?
John.
Okay. John?
Hi, John Crickmore. I guess my feeling, oh, not my feeling on this. I guess my takeaway from what this meeting is supposed to be about is deciding on who gets to decide what, essentially. So a couple questions. Do we currently, by ordinance, not allow any type of retail establishment to Talon? Does any, if any, does anyone know that?
Any, any retail establishments that we specifically?
Yeah, that is not allowed by ordinance of the Town Council.
There is, that's my knowledge. It's all through the zoning regulations.
Yeah.
I guess my, my thought on this is that this, you know, there's a, I think there's an ordinance area for the Town Council, and I think there's a zoning area for Planning and Zoning. I think we both have, I think we both have or should have a say in, you know, whether up or down, whatever the vote is, in our separate areas. I think the ordinance part, similar to something like smoking cigarettes or drinking alcohol, is a Town Council issue as far as stating where it can be or can't be, in parks, on school grounds, et cetera, et cetera. And I think the, the decision on if it's allowed in Talon, being added to legal, now considered a legal retail business, should be left for Planning and Zoning. And I, if I'm not mistaken, that's kind of what the discussion's gonna be about tonight.
I think that's, that's the case. The only part that I'm a little concerned with is further down, like the, the information that was in the package. There's a couple of questions that I had in relation to, for instance, right now, in the, I think, medical marijuana is allowed within 100 yards, 100 feet of a school. But then further down in this here, the signage per SB 1201 can't be visible to the public within 500 feet of an elementary or secondary school. So that was a question, that was more a question than I had, if, if it should be 100 or 500. But more important, I think, as John indicated, is trying to figure out a path forward for us to decide who's doing what, because there's a piece in here that we didn't talk about, which is all the way down on page three, actually, I think it's on page 14, the prohibiting recreational cannabis establishments. Basically, if we get petitioned by the town either way with 10% of the population, we have to have a referendum, and then the people of town get to vote and decide whether or not Talon is going to have legal recre, allow sale of legal marijuana in the town. So we could start going through all this, get a petition either way, both ways, and have to put it on a referendum. And Lisa, my concern with that is it's saying that if we get that rec, that petition within 60 days of a vote, we have to put it on the ballot. So I don't know from a timing perspective if it's smarter for us to discuss, do we wanna put this on a referendum for the people of Talon, or do we wanna make this decision and then we're kind of, I don't know? And can they petition after we decide?
I don't.
I think now's the time to lead, guys. Like, this should be treated just like alcohol and smoking.
Who's this?
Because this is.
Hey.
Good for you.
Yeah. There's not a public participation.
It's not a public meeting.
Okay. But research shows we treat it.
Thank you.
Lock that, so nobody can.
Can I ask a question about what you just said?
Yes.
It says within 60 days. So doesn't that just give them a week to get the petition in before sort of regular election, which would be November 2nd, 3rd, whatever it is?
Yeah, the first Tuesday. So, but that theoretically could happen.
A week.
Right.
So my question was, if, your same question was, so if they don't get a petition in, and we go ahead and make regulations, could a petition be filed before the next?
Before the next election, or even before the next election? Because we've had to do special elections in the past. We've had to do referendum elections in like a February timeframe. I'm not clear on this law. If somebody calls a petition, if we say, yes, you wanna do this, this is what we're gonna do. If people, that takes them four months to pull 1,500 signatures together, can they throw that at us and then we have to have a special election?
Yeah, it says regular election.
So it would have to be just every, any year, we would have to put it on in our regular?
Right.
November or May? Because May is the, is a, well, is this, wait a minute. Is it just a, it's not a referendum, so it's not a budget? So, okay.
I think, I mean, I think none of that essentially matters at the moment. And if that's what town residents want, then that's, when it comes time to, then we'll have to deal with it. I think we should just figure out what our roles are here, and then have our discussions with our, you know, at our, our meetings with the, obviously, there's people online that this is a hot bus button issue either way, for or against. So I think we should just decide what our roles are as elected officials, and then take it back to our, our own meetings. And I had one other question, and then I'll shut up. This is probably a legal question that some will have to get clarification on. So this is now considered legal in Connecticut, but it's not legal when it comes to the federal government. Does that put us in any type of jeopardy for doing something that's not legal with the gov, with the federal government?
I think what we have seen, John, so far, is the states that have legalized it have not seen any retribution from the federal government. But I believe the federal government has also comments in the past that at any point, they can hold it against you, kind of a thing. But they have not taken any action in any of the states that have legalized.
Thank you.
It's kind of like, follow what they're, is it more important what they're doing or what they're saying, I guess, unfortunately?
Well, I mean, the interesting juxtaposition we have is that you can go and buy it in Massachusetts. You can have it in Connecticut, but you can't transport it across the border, because that becomes a, that's a federal offense.
And you have no legal way to buy it right now?
Right. So it's interesting, you can, I guess you'd have to say you found it here, and now I can have it.
Yeah. So I guess what I'd like to try to really talk about is, is kind of what John was saying. This, this legislation enables both of our bodies to say yes or no. I would rather us talk about how do we want to handle this? You know, what parts do we wanna see fall under the Planning and Zoning? What parts do we want to fall under Town Council? And honestly, my overall question is, do we want this on referendum for the people of Talon to decide whether or not they wanna have sale of recreational marijuana?
If I understand correctly reading this, it only has to go to referendum if it gets petitioned, correct? We don't have to send it to referendum just because?
Do not have to, no. We can to ask either yes or no. Or if we are petitioned, then we have to ask the question as petition.
Yep. I, I think in this situation, I think it's fair and consistent for the Town Council to provide ordinance for use on town property, like we have for smoking and alcohol. So I think it's fair and consistent there. I think it would be fair and consistent then to have the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine, you know, is it going to be prohibited, you know, in zones? But then to say, these zones are where this can be. And if we need to adjust signage, that's something that we can adjust there. But I think it's, I think that's the fair and consistent way of looking at this.
Yeah.
So, and then, and then dealing with the issue of referendum when it comes up. But, you know, we're dealing, I'm, 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 we have to look at this, you know, there, there are different folks that have different opinions on marijuana, just like there are folks that have different opinions on cigarettes and smoking and everything else. And what we then get into is choosing what legal thing an adult can do or buy in their town. And I, I find that to be disconcerting. And you can bring up all the reasons. You can talk about, oh, it's gonna get into kids, or people are gonna get it. Or, you know, the object itself can't get anywhere. The responsibility of how the object is used is the responsibility of the adult who had it. So if you buy it and it gets out, it's not the product's fault. That's your fault for not maintaining the safety of that product. It's the same thing with alcohol, it's the same thing with tobacco, it's the sauce. It's the same thing with, with anything. You are responsible for that product. Now, the question then becomes, is it a legal product? And assuming that there is no referendum that comes forward to block it inside the town, we would have to look at it as being in what zone would it be applicable? And it would appear, because we were not making any decision yet, but it would appear that would be consistent to have it mere medical marijuana in regards to its location. But we can address, we don't want it in the TCC, if we don't want it in the ZBA or someplace else, if we want it just in the industrial zone, we can limit. So getting as far as the responsibilities of each elected body here. I was involved with the Planning and Zoning when we did the medical marijuana discussion. I, I personally think that, like Mr. Powell had just mentioned, the role of, of the Planning and Zoning is to determine where to put it in town, what zones, how to regulate businesses signage. That's their role, it's not the Town Council's role. And frankly, I would defer to them. I know how they, their public hearing system works. I think it's a little better than council. But I like, they, they are set up much better to have these discussions with citizens of Talon about placement, about what zones to restrict, not to restrict, where to have it, if to have it. So my personal preference would be to let the Planning and Zoning Commission determine where in town, or if in town, recreational marijuana, retail store is placed.
Bruce, I'm sorry, do you mind if I go to Brenda first? Brenda?
Hold on, I gotta allow her to.
Yeah. I think you can.
Okay. Point of order, first of all, no sitting member who has a voice in this meeting should be prohibited from unmuting themselves. You need to be able to jump in with a point of order if needed. So you can't mute us and not allow us to unmute ourselves. Secondly, you need to turn off chat, because there are people still who are not part of this meeting writing things in chat. So you need to figure that out before we can continue this meeting.
I think I did, Palace can chat with no.
Chat is definitely disabled. Disabled.
I got, I have a chat message. Okay, it's might be disabled right now, but it was disabled before because there is, there was a new message that showed up while you guys were talking.
Yeah, and I, right after that, I shut chat off.
Okay. So again, you need to figure out, though, for all the sitting members who can speak, how to unmute them so that they can participate at any point in this meeting if they need to do a point of order.
My, I can unmute and mute myself.
I was not able to.
All right. Bruce?
Right, just wanted to follow up on what Kurt said. Having taken part in the discussions on medical marijuana, there were public hearings, there was a great deal of input from both sides of the issue. I think it was a really thorough discussion. I think a lot of the issues came, came out and were aired. And, you know, I, I would concur that, that Planning and Zoning could handle that type of input from the public. And, you know, short of a referendum, a public hearing and a zone change to allow recreational cannabis would be a good way to get input from the town. I think that's critical, that we need to hear from as many residents as possible.
I agree wholeheartedly. I think that's my, that's my overarching concern, is making sure that we're hearing from everybody that we can in the town. That's why I personally would lean more towards just putting it on a referendum and letting the town residents decide. And then from that decision, I would agree, obviously, that would be, Planning and Zoning would handle all the zoning issues. Town Council would handle the, the signage, and no smoking, or vaping, or any of that, was alcohol, whatever, however you put it, and town buildings, parks, schools, et cetera. That's my only sticking point, is I agree with everything else. My only sticking point comes down to giving the town the ability to decide if they want to have recreational sales in Talon. Deb?
Two questions. Can you put anything you want to referendum? Can you just decide what goes to referendum? I just talked about petition, it says that Town Council can decide.
Yeah, I, we have the ability. I think, I think it's petition or if, yeah, the Town Council can put it on. But I think here, a ballot referendum, it's, it's a budget referendum, a ballot referendum, 10% elect and bring petition at least 60 days before a regular election. The vote is up to not do it. Ballot referendum could also pass to require the town to permit it. So I don't think it has to be. That's the people's last stop. If they wanna do a petition to say, no, we don't want this, or yes, we do want this. My thinking is just give them that option upfront.
Okay. So my second thing is, if you decide to go that route, we should probably talk about a moratorium? Because if we don't do anything, correct, David, then someone could come in under existing regulations and it would be handled. I believe what I read is that it would be handled as an alcohol.
Yep. That is correct.
Did you guys put something in the medical marijuana part, though, that said it was not applicable to recreational? I remember that being a big point.
That only would count when recreational marijuana wasn't legal. Now that it's legal, that's gonna, that's gonna change the wording in that.
But is that wording still, was that wording there? Is that one still?
There, there's some wording in there. I'd have to look at it, but it was illegal when we made that wording. So I don't know that that will prohibit it now, being a legal business. But I would agree with what some of the other people have said. I mean, we have a very good public hearing platform for Planning and Zoning. I think unless it gets petitioned, I mean, everybody in town knows what's going on. People in the state know what's going on. Public hearings get announced. People will have the opportunity to petition it, if they wanna petition it, and it could go to a referendum. Referendums cost the town money, and if it's not a necessary thing, I think sending something to referendum that is a zoning matter when we have a public hearing process in place seems to be overkill to me and probably not necessary. I also don't like the concept of, you know, putting a moratorium on it. If it's something that we need to address, let's get it on the docket and let's address it sooner than later.
David, was there, in your review, was there a period of time? Because they can't license right now, you can't apply for a license right now. Therefore, there would be no reason for us to accept a petition for whole location because it's licensed. That is possibly correct. So there is, so I was looking back through, first of all, of the sort of prohibition of recreational marijuana. So we defined agriculture specifically as not including recreational. It doesn't address the retail side. Going back to that question, my understanding is that we, yeah, we have to treat it as a similar establishment that is not a marijuana establishment. That's the way the statute reads. Our provisions for general retail don't specifically require licensure of any sort. So I suppose somebody could apply. And I was talking to Lake Amato about the silly or two. And, and I think, yeah, the reason many communities aren't considering moratoriums is that that may not be the case, that we would be able to deny on the grounds that they don't have a state license at this point. That's okay. Yeah.
I think you would have to consider that, because the licensure process for this is, first of all, it's not even established. And second of all, what they're, they're talking about putting in for requirements for licensure is going to be very hard to get it. So if you have somebody apply to say, I wanna put a recreational marijuana place, and we're only allowed one, and get their license for three years, then they're technically holding your one if you approve it. I think you would definitely have to say, you have to have the license. I actually think that, have the license to apply, or something like that. I'm not 100% sure, because it's 376 pages. But I think there was something requiring the licensure to establish the retail location. Because with a town like Talon, with it, we're only gonna have, we don't have 25,000 people, so. Yep?
Do you even have time to get it on the referendum? Are you limited to about 60 days of time?
We have time if we were to do it, if we were to decide quickly. Like, if we were to decide quickly. Pardon?
Can I ask why we're discussing something that really doesn't matter? Or is before us, or may never be before us? We're kind of getting off topic, I think.
No, that was part of the topic, was to decide whether, one of the things we wanna talk about is the path forward. And if people agree, or if they want to, one of the path forwards is to ask the residents what they think, if they want to, referendum or not.
Right, but you're guys talking about somebody petitioning us and?
Anybody can petition us at any time. Yeah. And that's actually in the law. It states that as long as 10% of your population petitions you, you have to put it on a referendum. You don't have.
I understand that, but even more reason why we should be kind of delegating who's gonna decide what, so that these conversations can be had if it does get put on through a referendum question. I just don't understand why we're talking about something that might happen.
Right, because again, there's all. Right, because again, there's only a week to get the sixty days, correct?
So looking through our medical marijuana dispensary regulations, I do not see, I thought we talked about it uh when we did them, but I don't see anything that restricts recreational marijuana under section sixteen dash fourteen. Um, but in the requirements for a medical marijuana, a copy of the medical marijuana dispensary or producer license issued under the authority of the commissioner of the Department of Consumer Protection is one of the requirements for us to approve a permit. Um, so it would be very similar to that, even if recreational marijuana happened to be able to piggyback under this, they would still, the way this is written, they would need a license in order to apply because it's one of the requirements.
So, so just to the, the tricky issue is that it says uh unless, I mean, the law says, the, the state statute that says unless otherwise provided for by municipality through its zoning regulations or ordinance, a cannabis establishment shall be zoned as if for any other similar use other than a cannabis establishment would be zoned.
So you can't mirror it on the medical, it has to be mirrored on any other retail.
No, I think you can practically.
I mean, that would be true if you don't have it, if you don't have the regulations on books, so we would have to, we would have to move to have a text change on the regulation to say an application for a recreational, uh, a recreational business would have to have the license.
Yes.
Because if we put that in, then, then we can have, we can hold anything, you know, for however long they can see a license, and nobody without a license can't come and squat on a place or squat on that, that. Um, because that, that was actually part of the conversation that we went through, is that there was, we had been petitioned by somebody who didn't have a license for, for medical. And we went forward with it just to be able to get it on the books, um, so that we had a position. Because we were way behind on that.
Yeah.
But I believe you need zoning approval in order to get a license, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg uh situation. Um, I, I, I think you need to demonstrate in order to get a license that you, you have zoning approval.
Yeah, I said that.
Yeah.
I thought, I, that's, yeah, I thought that was.
Yeah, yeah, I remember, I do remember that, at least with the medical, uh, just not sure you're. Yeah. But uh, kind of getting back to our referendum, um, you know, we're talking about whether it's a, a town council initiated referendum versus a petition referendum. Uh, I, I am not in favor of town council initiating any kind of referendum. Um, this is, I think it's a little more of a binary yes or no, this, this discussion, this topic, uh, that should be hashed out in a public hearing setting, uh, you know, some people might be, say yes or no for various, um, and so that's why you know, there's multitude, it's not just a yes, no binary. Um, there, there's things that need to be discussed that can't be put on a, a, a one line ballot question. Uh, so as far as my position at town council, I would not support um us initiating any kind of petition to ask the town their feelings, I would recommend we go through the planning zoning um process and the public hearings process of that.
Thank you for your input, um, Karen?
I just had a question, um, is there anything that's stopping us from putting it on the municipal ballot like as a question, or is it way too, I feel like that's too rushed, but I just didn't know if, instead of talking referendum, if it's enough to do the research and have a couple of hearings and then have it proposed on the, the ballot for municipals.
So if we were gonna put it on the ballot for the municipals in November, um, we would have to.
It would be real tight.
We're tight, but we can do it, but that, that was like the point of trying to get this meeting on uh the calendar when we could. It's tight, but it could be doable, and it would just be the basic question of, you know, should the town of Tallinn allow recreational sales of marijuana?
Right, okay.
I would agree with Kurt that it should not be a town initiated thing. They, I mean, it should be town, not town council initiated, unless people want it, we shouldn't be initiating it.
Okay, thank you, uh, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I think at this point, my general opinion would be, I am kind of in favor of town initiated unless uh residents initiate it on their own, I think it is important to note in the bill that, that actually, the language for the question is actually already put in place, so even if it went to a referendum, if it was citizen initiated, initiated, um, it has a specific language saying, shall the sale of recreational marijuana be allowed in name of municipality, and our, our case would be Tallinn, so just an important point of note that regardless of whether we did it or it was resident initiated, we're kind of already have our hands tied on how the question would even be proposed to the community. But I am also in favor, I think I heard some prior comments from other uh commissioners about them kind of managing the uh organization of where it will or will not be allowed, and that the council would have more cognizance over signage and um allowing it in certain, or not signage, but for allowing it on recreational areas or town space or in town buildings and other things like that, so that's all I have for now.
I'm sorry, uh, in the beginning, I wasn't sure if you said you were for a referendum or against.
I'm, I'm in favor of the, the council considering a, a referendum being put in place, uh, in terms of the timeline. I personally feel that by this November would be extremely rushed. But I do agree, we could find, you know, savings on a referendum if it was placed in alignment with either a, a budget referendum date, the fall in twenty twenty two, or in the following uh November election year, if state statute allows that timeline.
Thank you, um, Brenda?
Yes, thank you, um, I'm, I am also in favor in the town council initiated referendum question. Um, I'd be curious to find out first which, if in November or May, we usually get higher voter turnout, this way we have um a better opportunity um to hear from more residents, and I, I think it's um municipal elections, we end up hearing from more people rather than a budget referendum. So I know it's tight, but we know the question, so um i- it's, you know, basically rubber stamped to get on um the ballot. Um, I think it would yeah, um, I, I think it's beneficial to get it input from the residents in as many as we can, and I think that's the way to do it, we'll get a lot more people looking at the question and talking about it um on the ballot than we will at a public hearing.
Thank you, um, John?
Thank you, uh, so I, I wouldn't be in favor of town council initiated referendum, I do like that, especially trying to squeeze it onto the upcoming, uh, squeeze it on the ballot question, the upcoming election, I think that's just, it's too quick of a timeframe, I think. Uh, I do like the public hearing through planning zoning process, that would give everybody a chance to speak up about this and then go through the whole process after that. That's where I go on this.
Anything else?
No.
No? Okay, how about you, Ben?
Um, I'm taking it all in, because I think I have a unique perspective, um. I, I've been a member of the Salvation Army for um pretty much my whole life, and um I, I've had a lot of dealings with their, their rehabilitation program, um, the A R C. Um, in, in Toledo, Ohio, where I, I was a teenager, in um UCIS and um in Hartford before it closed down, and I, I was able to work with um a lot of the men in the rehab program, and um, and, and I know nailed for what I, what I have to say, but this comes from my personal experience, um, every single um guy that, that I worked, that I had interaction with all told me that uh their first um, their, their, their first uh entry into heavy drugs was uh, was pot or alcohol. And um, so, um, and I know there, there's science out there that, that says different things, but this is my personal experience uh with it. Um, I don't think we need to um put it on, um, put it to referendum. There, there's, there's already provisions in the law, that's when we have to put it to referendum. And that's when we have the petition. That, that, that's kind of seals it for me, you know, if the town wants it to go to referendum, go let the petition and, and submit a petition to us saying that they want it. Um, you know, i- it seems like the way the law was written, they put provisions in there and protected, you know, a council from saying, uh, yes, you have to put it on, or no, you don't have to put it on. If the people want it on, there's a way for them to put it on.
Okay, thank you very much, do you want me to go through your people also?
Sure.
Deb?
I'm torn. I like hearing from the people and being on a referendum, we would hear from more people. I don't see how it works for this election. Uh, it's just too tight of a timeframe. So people, people do a petition, and it can be, but it definitely says regular election, it does not say budget referendum. So I think may is off the table, so our next election is November. Now, based on the timeframe, and that we've never had anyone apply in Tallinn anyway for the medical, I don't think that we're gonna see a place between now and the next November. We could consider a moratorium if we wanted to do that. Or we could go ahead, planning, as we had talked about, planning and zoning would talk about where and those issues, and town council would talk about where it could be used. I think that you do have to address that as town council and have an ordinance, no smoking in public places, Vernon just did that last night or the night before, and so I do think town council still has issues with this and things that you can control, the hours can hold.
Isn't that okay?
I thought that was in here.
Well, that was one of my questions, because it says something about regular establishment, and I know, for instance, they reference like package stores can only sell for a certain time, but that's a state regulation, not a town, so are we saying that recreational marijuana could be a twenty four hour?
So, so the, the law specifically provides, or, or it provides town council and planning and zoning commission authority to complete various things within the law, um, I, I'm in full agreement with everything that's been said about regulating zones and all that through planning and zoning, I think the one, the one question that I think could go either way, and that probably either body could potentially decide to regulate is uh the business hours. Logically, um, but the, the reason being that if it happens via ordinance, that's retroactive, it's blanket, it applies to, applies to everybody. Uh, to do it through uh planning and zoning, we could certainly um put it into the regulations that the hours are X. Um, what would happen if we decided that those hours were too broad and we needed to narrow them, is it would become a legally non-conforming use of somebody already had one, open, open longer, when it's done through the zoning regulations? Um, or alternatively, we, we do it uh through the special permit process, we have the ability to uh control business hours uh based on, you know, logical reasoning based on noise or traffic or, or something to that effect, so that could go a whole, I, I think both bodies could probably stake, take that if they wanted to, um, and yeah, I leave it to you as to which is better.
I'm not looking for friction.
Just one other thing, just because we're talking about it going to a public hearing, and that we're talking about, we'll, we'll look at the zones and then that will go to a public hearing, it doesn't mean the decision is done.
Oh, no.
The public comes out and not gonna go forward with it, so we're not gonna make decisions contrary to what we hear, or we might revise if we say, well, these three zones look good to us, but the public says, oh, no, you can't. You know, and they give us valid reasons why that zone's not good, so nobody should think that we're talking about taking control of that portion of self-controls.
Right, thank you for that, that's very good feedback, uh, Bruce?
I think as I've said before, getting input from as many people as possible is really the key, and we, we really want a meaningful input, like the the counselor had, you know, a unique perspective, and in the context of a public hearing, you can, and we can, we even allow people to talk for more than two minutes at our, our meetings too, so you can really hear from the people, my fear, if this goes to a referendum in these polarized times, is it's gonna be open discussion and T F N and people waving signs and screaming at each other, it's not gonna be a discussion of the merits of the issue, and I, I think that's really important, I I'm not sure how I feel about this, and I'm sure many other people are conflicted as I am, and I I really want to hear from people and hear their stories and uh get a sense of, of of, of what the town is feeling, and I, I'm not sure we get that from a referendum.
Thank you, um, John, can you get the background?
And then I'm gonna get to, I'm gonna get to everybody else on, on screen in a second.
So I'm trying to just get a, get some clarity around this, my understanding as I read this is that planning and zoning, um, they can say there are no zones in town where this is gonna work, essentially saying, we're not gonna allow a dis- uh, a dispensary in town, is that correct?
Correct.
And then it also says, but the town council by ordinance
We can.
can pass something, so what we're trying to figure out here today is, is how we're gonna take the two bodies and figure a way forward, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's my problem, is that there's process legislation that give us both the same ability to do the same things, and we can come up with contrary things, and I don't want that. I would much rather us have these conversations to say who's gonna handle what and where it's gonna fall, um, so we're not fighting amongst ourselves, if town council says, yep, no, we want it this way, we want it, we want it to not be allowed, and the planning and zoning says, no, we're gonna allow it, now we've got two elected bodies fighting with each other. Um, and we both have the ability to do just that, and that's.
So would it make sense to just get a feeling for what people think, uh, among the two bodies, I have strong feelings about this? Um, and, and it sounds like Bill does too. So I don't know if it would make sense to just get an idea of where people are on this, and then we may find ourselves to be pretty divided, I don't know, but may, we may find ourselves to be leaning in, in one direction or another, I don't know.
Well, I want to be careful because regardless, like if, if the planning and zoning decide, if we decide planning and zoning is gonna handle this, right, that they're gonna decide, make the decision on um allowing or not allowing. I don't want us to be expressing our opinions on it, because that's what the public hearing is for, and we don't want to have that, we become a resident at that point, where town council, but we become a resident at a public hearing, expressing our opinion on whether or not we want the town to do this. Um, and that's gonna happen regardless of how we do it, if we say planning and zoning is gonna handle the zoning part of it, they're gonna have to have public hearings, if we have a referendum, we're back to being individual residents there too, so don't necessarily, I don't know if it's, I don't know what you think, but I'm not sure if we get into our personal opinions on legalization or, or allowing it or not allowing it in town, if this is the time and place for us to do that. Um, I think you're right, everybody, and Bruce said too, you know, as Bill said, this is every individual's opinion on this, so I don't, I guess I, you say no, that's what I'm trying to say.
I, I think part of the, part of the reason why we're in this situation is that there may be towns that have, their planning and zoning might not be elected, they may be appointed, and so you have that situation where you want to allow the public to be able to have input in terms of what's going on, and in those scenarios where you have um duly elected bodies, then they have to really come together to make a decision of who's gonna, who's going to play what position. So I think that's part of the reason why that's there, but I think you know, it's appropriate to be consistent in the way that we have governed over, you know, a hundred years in regards to whose responsibility is what. And I think that's appropriate and consistent, and using whatever public, uh, public forum that we have, um, I think provides the opportunity for people to put in that input, I can understand why we want to have a town referendum on it, but then again, it's a very cut and dry thing, you don't hear the detail behind it. You know, your point in regards to your personal experience is lost because it's never recorded in the, in the election, or in that vote, so I think that we have a, a fair and consistent method as written by the law to say, you know, we're gonna make our decision on what you're gonna do, my opinion is that from an appointment, from a, from a um important standpoint, town council absolutely has the responsibility to determine where this legal product can be used, it's completely consistent. And then on the counter side, when it comes down to um zoning, that's our role. And we can have that whole discussion, and we may decide that it's not appropriate in these owner, we may decide that it's appropriate in these three zones, but we'll have the, to be able to go through everything, and I really think that, and then the case comes forward, if in a year or two, and no one's put forward a petition, and now they come back with a petition, the town does have the ability to recall or re-endorse the decisions that we've made. So tha- that's how I see it.
I think it's, as hard as it is for all of us too, it's important to remember. I think it's as hard as it is for all of us too. It's important to remember that this Connecticut state legislature has said this is legal. It is legal. Anybody can be standing right outside that door right now, smoking pot, and there's nothing anybody can do about it. It's a legal product now. So legal, whether or not people are smoking in town, out in the public and that, there's nothing that we can do about that. What, what we have to decide is whether or not the town is going to allow, uh, an establishment to sell marijuana or cannabis in, in our legal boundary. So that's where I'm trying to get focused on that question. And then we all become citizens when we go to, yeah, let you guys.
Well, you actually do have the ability as the town council to determine if, I mean, you can't be smoking and standing here, but if I go across the street and I'm on my private property, then I can do it.
You can do it.
Now, you can't restrict it because it is legal in, in Connecticut. So, so the town council does have some control.
We do.
In regards to that. But I think personally, I think it would be fair and consistent for the town council to quickly move to an ordinance.
Oh, we should.
Because i- if you can't smoke and you can't drink, you know, this is the next point. You should, if you choose to do that, restrict, uh, use of town property. So I think that would be something we want to move with very quickly.
Regardless, yes. I think we, we would have to do that regardless.
Yep.
But what I don't, what I don't see anywhere in.
Hold on, I got Steve ahead of you. Steve?
Okay, that's fine. As long as we're going to get acknowledged because it kind of seems like us in the back corner here are just kind of getting thrown to the wolves. So if Steve wasn't going to speak up, I'm going to.
I'm checking the hands. Like, I'm checking the hands. Steve?
I'm, I'm actually okay with Joe going ahead of me. I, he, he sounds like he's ready to speak, so I can, I can take.
Go ahead, Joe.
Raise your hand, Steve.
Raise your hand, yes.
All right. So my hand. Um, so a few things. What I can't find in the history of our town is where we, when alcohol came out of prohibition, where we had a referendum on it, where we discussed it. I can't find in our regulation, a single retail business that we restrict. Um, I understand people's personal opinions, but we're not supposed to make decisions based off per, personal opinions. We're supposed to make decisions based off of facts. Um, and the facts are, it's going to happen whether we allow it or not. I ran on a pro-business platform. I ran on promoting business, not restricting business. We don't, we don't have a single other retail establishment we restrict. Recreational marijuana is considered retail. The state of Connecticut allows it. If we don't have it in our town, all we're doing is giving up 3% of the taxes because direct 3% of sales goes to the municipality that the business is in. If it's in the next town over, it's not going to stop anybody's business. It's not going to stop anything. Uh, it's not going to stop people in town from having marijuana or consuming it. I think what we're doing, if we start restricting retail businesses based off of personal opinion, is we are going down a slippery slope that the town could get sued on. We are supposed to make our decisions based on rules. And if the state allows it, we don't have any restrictions on package stores other than setbacks. But I mean, we have package stores next to daycares, next to schools. I don't even know what our setback is, but it's very minimal. We don't have restrictions on pharmacies. Um, if we start restricting retail businesses in a town that we're, I know planning and zoning, I know me and the people I ran with ran on a pro-business platform. It's a legal business now that the state says is legal. I, I, I'm not even quite sure why, other than wherever it fits in a retail zone, would even be a discussion at this point. Um, but I'm against moratoriums and I'm against, uh, restricting legal business from operating in our town based off of people's personal opinions, not off of, if the state says it's legal, it's a business. Uh, so, and I'm, I'm against bringing it to a referendum unnecessarily.
I would only say back, Joe, unfortunately, this legislation, um, has made it a town-by-town thing. The state has legalized it, but this piece of legislation has said every town either opts in or opts out.
Correct. It, it, the state legislation gives you the option, but we don't restrict a other single retail business in our entire town. If it's retail and it fits the criteria of retail, we allow it either with a special permit or a permit. A lot of retail businesses, unless it's a drastic change of use or an addition on a building over 10%, they don't even need to come in front of planning and zoning. It's a staff approval, permit, or a site plan approval. So this will be the first retail business ever in the history of town that we either say yes or no on based off of personal opinions, not off the fact that they're a legitimate retail business in the state of Connecticut.
I understand wholeheartedly. And, you know, it's part of the, the legislation, which I have issues with anyway. So I hear you. I understand it. But that's the conversation that unfortunately we have to have.
Then that's what I'm saying. Just because the state's giving us the right to say no, doesn't mean we have to make rules against it. Just because we have the option to go yes or no, doesn't mean we have to do anything about it. And if we do nothing about it, it's treated as a retail business and it's, it's no different than any other retail business that's allowed in retail zones.
Right. Unless the public petitions, correct?
Correct. And give the public the option to petition if they want to. But if the public doesn't petition, we're turning something that's not something into something.
Gotcha. Thank you. Uh, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I just want to recognize, I appreciate some of, um, Chairman Powell's comments about the ordinances that maybe we should be focusing on as a council even before, um, legalization, if we were to put forward a referendum in terms of maybe reaching out for input from the recreation advisory board or the conservation commission as to whether they feel it's appropriate to allow use on their spaces. I know in terms of the conservation of the trail areas, uh, most spaces do not allow the use of alcohol and smoking and, and those kinds of things. So it might be good for an initial focus outside of, um, a major question that would go to the public to consider that being lined up for a series of ordinances. Um, one question that I had through you, Madam Chair, to Lisa Hancock is if we were to do a, a council-initiated referendum as an ordinance, would it have to go to a public hearing where then individuals would have to provide input on whether or not they even want this to go to referendum? And I know it adds and kind of opens up a can of worms and adds an additional kind of red tape layer to the process. But I'm curious if, if we went forward with that, would we have to have a public hearing before it even goes to referendum?
That's a very good question, Steve.
We usually do have a public hearing before, um.
Before a referendum, before a question is put on.
Sure. We usually do all types of communications. We don't.
Bonding requests.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of those kinds of.
So, you know, there's, that's why I'm saying it would be so close because not only do you have your 60-day rules, but you also have to do, you notice there's a certain amount of time, which I don't have it in front of me. A certain amount of time where you have to post a public hearing, have the public hearing. You know, first set the public hearing, then you have the public hearing. Then there's amount of time, you know, for, um, advertising it. There's a whole schedule, which I think for this particular referendum, if you were going to do it, it's going to be.
It's going to be.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't even know if we have enough time.
Yeah.
Because usually by now, if we were doing a bonding on November.
He's dating stuff over here. He's saying we don't.
Yeah. No, I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Well, I will just say I did have the, um, the charter up just to kind of do a quick, quick peruse. But if it was a citizen initiative one, I think it's essentially within 30 days. If we fail to adopt an ordinance, um, such as this, then within 90 days after it was originally filed, then it would have to go to referendum if it was citizen initiative. And I think that's where there's some uncertainty. If it was council initiative, what the process would be. Um, and then just one other comment I wanted to make before, I, I know there's other speakers ahead of me, but I just wanted to give an opportunity to Trooper Eklund. I know he's been on for, it's about an hour since the meeting started. I wasn't sure if there was a portion of the meeting where, um, they were going to provide any information or, or thoughts or input, not in regards to legalization, but what the impact is to, um, troops, to our residency treatment program, what, what their, uh, concerns are regarding, um, whatever path we take forward and, and the state laws as it is.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure yet. Um, I know Kevin is on and I know I asked for him to come on. And I just, I don't know if we're in this conversation that needs to take place yet. I've been actually mulling that over, but thank you for reminding me.
Yeah. No, I, I didn't want to put, put Trooper Eklund on the spot, but I also didn't want him to kind of sit here twiddling his thumbs for two or three hours, wondering why he's even invited. He, he's not putting any input in, but, um, but thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm actually, Brenda, before I go to you, I'm going to go to John because you already said you wanted to go to referendum. So I just want to get an idea of where John stands and then I'll go back to you. John?
First of all, can, can something even go to referendum that's not legally something that we can, we can even legally approve anything yet? Because it's, it doesn't take effect until next year. So could we even, I mean, is this conversation even worth having?
It's actually, well, it was effective July 1st of this year. So it's already effective. Um, you can't get a license yet, but towns are currently going through the process of saying yes or no now. Um, prior to, because that's going to also limit and help with the licensing situation at the state. If they know X amount of towns are not going to allow it, that'll impact their.
Okay. Um, I'm not, I'm for a referendum if the citizen initiates it. Um, and the other thing I just want to mention quickly, and I know that Trooper Eklund's on, Chief Lightell is on, but none of these conversations have anything to do with what we're supposed to be discussing tonight. And we're starting to have like side conversations about why we think it's good and why we think it might not be good with different personal experiences. And that's not what this meeting's about. And those are all things that we do need to discuss, but they need to be discussed at a proper meeting once we decide whatever that format's going to be. So I don't want this to turn into a meeting where we're kind of starting to already post our opinions on whether we like marijuana or we hate marijuana, why we like it, why it's a great retail business, how much tax money we're going to get. None of that really has anything to do with this special meeting. And I don't want it to, I guess, turn into us giving voicing opinions about something. We're, we're really supposed to be deciding how we're going to proceed with who's going to, who's going to say what, who's going to determine what. And I think that's where we need to keep this, in my opinion.
I agree. Thank you. Uh, Brenda?
Thank you. Um, three things. First, I think because we started talking about the petition and we have a number of residents on in, you know, no, minutes are going to get out and stuff. I have a feeling there's going to be, and that, uh, resident-initiated petitions. Um, and I think they're going to be initiated probably by, uh, people on both sides, uh, you know, both wanting to have sales in the town and not allowing sales in the town. So, um, I, I really do have a strong feeling that that's going to happen. Um, the, I, I also want to be cognizant of that, even though this is legal in the state of Connecticut, it is not federally legal. Um, I know the possibility of having, um, someone from the federal government come in and, um, you know, administer that law in however way they want is probably slim to none. Um, but it, it's still, you know, for those people who feel the, the federal law trumps the, um, you know, the state laws, that's an issue for them. So that we, we might be getting people petitioning or talking about that. Lastly, signs, I've been bringing this up for a couple of months since we opened, um, Crandall, that we really need to get on board with this. Um, you know, and we need to take a look at the same time that we're talking about signs for, um, legal cannabis, um, for, if we're going to allow vaping in the same areas that there is smoking. We might as well do all three at once instead of doing just two of them and then finding out we have to add more signs later. Um, you know, those are my suggestions. I, I don't, I think that we should do the referendum. For me, it's, it's always more important to have input from the residents to find out where they like, where, where they're, um, standing on the issue. Referendum's a very easy way to find this out. Um, you know, we would get thousands of input instead of just 20 or 30 at a public hearing. Um, and a yes, no is a good way to get at least the temperature of the room. We might not get personal stories on a referendum, but we would get personal stories through emails um, and public participation at meetings. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Is your hand up there?
Yes. We can bring up for referendums, but is there any time to even get it on this next ballot?
I was.
Actually, Lisa's answering that, Brenda.
Yeah. I really would have to check all the, you know, the, the dates. And I would have to back the on it for sure. Because I know there's a certain set of procedures.
Right.
Make it happen. But I certainly want to make sure before I say. I know it would be tight. I know, for example, if we, I mean, bond referendum right now, we'd probably have to have started like the first meeting in August, um, for a bonding one. Could have a different set of requirements. So we, I think, I already wrote it down to see what the requirements would be timing, whether it were a council-initiated one or a citizen-initiated one, and to see if there's any difference in.
Right.
And how that's done. So I will try to see by tomorrow or so.
I, I think it's worthy to find out, but I think the overwhelming response of the room and the people on Zoom, it's three people who want a referendum and everybody else who doesn't. So, um, Deb?
Yeah. And I had suggested that we have this joint meeting at one of our PCC meetings when we started talking about the legislation. Because we need to know if we're going to go forward with this, if we're going to work on our wording and schedule a public hearing. We need to know that the town ordinance prohibiting the use, because then that kind of counteracts what we're doing. So I think that's all, is whether you'd be going in. Now, this whole referendum talk has added a new wrinkle to it. But we just need to know from you guys whether you're even considering an ordinance to prohibit the use.
Well, and that's, I agree. That's why we wanted, that's why we wanted, um, to do this meeting to kind of vet out uh, who's doing what. So we don't have to, in boards, knocking heads over who's going to do that.
Right. It sounds like we can't decide that now because the referendum.
Well, I, I don't know. I think we just did a roundtable of the referendum. And like I said, you know, there's three of us that wanted to go to a town referendum. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, that don't. So, um, last time I checked, 25% wasn't a majority.
No, but I thought it would just be the town council deciding.
Right.
Um, that would be town council's purview. The referendum, citizen-initiated.
Right.
Request for one.
So what was your vote on the town council?
Well, right now it would, it would be tied. We don't have here. So, you know, Lou would be the, we would have to sit down and, and get everybody on the town council to look at that. But I didn't want to make this an either or. I wanted us to work on this together as two, the two boards that had cognizance over what's going to happen in the town from the recreational marijuana perspective. So I don't want to pull the, you know, higher than, lower than who's doing what. But that was my opinion on it. Um, Joe?
So I just want to like reiterate a little bit because I feel like we are bouncing all over the place. Um, you know, at the end of the day, this is a zoning matter. Uh, we ran for planning and zoning. We were elected on planning and zoning. It's a business. It's zoning related. I feel unless the town residents initiate a referendum, I think if town council initiates a referendum on a zoning matter, I think you are stepping on our toes and what we were elected to do. We were elected to zone regulations in the town. Town council was elected for budgets and town council things. Um, so I feel unless it is a resident-initiated referendum, I think it needs to be handled by planning and zoning because this is what we were elected by the town to do. Make decisions on businesses. It's our purview. It's, it's what our board does. Um, and, and I don't think, other than unless you want to make some regulations like, uh, Andy said on, you know, piggybacking on smoking and drinking on town property regulations, things like that, that would be within your purview. I think bringing it to referendum on your own goes against our board and what we were elected to do. Um, so I just want to be clear on that, that I am completely against the town council referendum. And if it is handled by planning and zoning and it goes to a public hearing, that's how we do things and how we were elected to handle things.
Joe, I understand what you're saying. I do. I understand it. This law, though, doesn't agree with you. And it supersedes our law. So that's why we're having the conversation because according to SB 1201, the town council has the right to, I don't want to just like enforce that, as like I just said to Deb. We're having these conversations together, but it's not as cut and dry as this is your role, this is our role. SB 1201.
SB 1201 literally mandates that it is either of us, both of us. So that's why we're having this meeting. That's why Andy and I talked about having this meeting so we could nail this down. I wholeheartedly care what you're saying and I agree from a zoning perspective, but it puts responsibility on the town council also.
But, you know, it gives the town council the option. It doesn't put the responsibility on you. So if town council takes the option, which is where I feel you would be stepping on planning and zoning's toes. You have the ability to, but the reason we're having this discussion is to see how planning and zoning feels on this. You don't have to take any action. Town council does not need to do anything. This only gives you the ability, the one time ever that town council has been granted the authority to handle a planning and zoning matter. So my point is, yes, you have the ability to. But if you do that, you're going against what all of us got elected to do. Just because the state says you can doesn't mean you have to. And I just wanna be clear, I ran for planning and zoning to do planning and zoning matters. So this is our purview and I do not think town council should do anything unless there is a resident-initiated referendum that then puts it in your court. But planning and zoning doesn't make referendums and I don't feel that it should go to a referendum unless the town wants it.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but we have Trooper Ackland and John Lightell. Should I just release them at this point?
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I think, you know, John and Kevin, thank you guys for joining, but you do not have to stay on. I don't think at this point, getting public safety involved in this part of the conversation is. So if you two wanna drop off, please feel free. Andy, you look like you're.
Um, no, I think I've, you know, I think that you've, the town council needs to get the ordinance taken care of. So we have consistency there. I think that a public-initiated referendum would be the appropriate way to go and that we would be responsible for the regulation in terms of where it is. And we can deal with the signing just like every other business. Now, I will point out, John, not John, but Joe, we couldn't have tattoo parlors until we changed the uses. So that was something that was, that was not allowed in town for a while, but we were able to work that out. It was not considered to be a public service.
There wasn't actually a regulation barring tattoo parlors. Somebody had a personal problem with them, correct?
No, let him finish, please.
But it was, if, but we've changed it. So there are areas that if things are not explicitly called out, they are, you can't do them. So I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to be consistent on that, but that's fine.
Kirk?
Thank you. So actually, I'm gonna kinda go back to Deb's question. You know, kinda the point of this meeting is to kinda get an idea of how we wanna handle this. And as I stated earlier, I do want to put this to the planning and zoning to go forward with this. And at least my personal preference is if it does go before planning zoning, regardless of what decision ends up coming out of that process, I would support that. I would not make any, I would not support any ordinances that go encounter to what the planning and zoning does. So, you know, so you don't have to feel like, oh, we approve it, the town council's just gonna shut it down. At least that's my personal preference. I think other councils should weigh in on that as well. And I think that's a pretty important thing so you guys can get the process going. And regardless, obviously, if there's a resident-initiated addition, that's a different issue. But at least from a council perspective, I would respect any kind of decisions made by the planning and zoning commission and going through their entire process of going forward with them.
Absolutely. I agree. You know, that whatever comes from the planning zoning is the, is the end result. You know, that's, that's not in question as far as I'm concerned at all. I do think we're gonna have to put on one of our meetings, the ordinance on town property and everything else, the pieces that we have to have ordinance on, we need to get acting on them. And the allowance of zoning and all that is definitely gonna fall to them. And like I said, when they have that meeting, we are citizens and that is it. You know, so our opinion is the same as anybody else's at that point. We do not exert any, once or anything over anything that happens in PCC. John?
So if, let's, I guess I'll play along for a minute. If this, if this were to go to referendum and the citizen said, yep, we want this in town, or no, we don't want this in town. Essentially, that's not the end answer, is it? I mean, the town council can still say, well, no, you can't have it in here. Or planning and zoning can say, well, okay, it's allowed, but it's not allowed in any of these zones. So essentially, it's not allowed.
I don't think, I think if it goes to referendum and the town of Tolland people say no, then you cannot legally have a recreational marijuana distributor in the town of Tolland.
And if they say yes?
Say yes, then you guys would have to decide where it can be allowed.
So let's say it's still gonna be regulated. It's not, you know, it's not like they're gonna say, yep, we want it and it's gonna go here and that's the end of the, the end of the story. There's still.
Question of, you think marijuana recreational sales should be allowed in the town of Tolland?
Period.
Period. That, that was, if it's a yes, then planning and zoning would decide where in Tolland. If it's a no, then no for the town, period. And there are towns that are going to exempt out of this.
And that would only change again if it went to referendum again and, you know, what, whatever, somebody else petitioned and then he went to referendum and he got a, the vote went from no to yes and it would change to yes, correct?
Honestly, John, I'm not sure on that. This, the legislation doesn't reference multiple referendum. Like it doesn't say if you have a referendum, it's good for 10 years or one year or two months. So technically, you could have warring every year. You could be having this on your referendum vote for yes or no. And whoever you're able to lobby to get to go vote, it could literally change year over year. It's very important, right?
I think if we can get some clarification on what would happen in that situation, that would also kinda be helpful for people that may be listening or deciding that they wanna do a referendum that, you know, I don't know if it, if it could be, you know, whatever way the vote goes, gonna be overturned the next year.
Lisa has written down. Kirk?
So kinda speaking on this, I'm gonna direct this to David. I think he might be the best. If, if it is, if it does go to referendum and it is a yes vote, I don't know, can't there any, could the planning and zoning commission then determine that there is no applicable zones or no areas where this could be, or is that?
I would say that would be a dicey proposition. I would say we probably need to identify somewhere that would be acceptable if a referendum.
Yeah, I would think they would have to put it someplace.
Creator's circle cameras. But that'll make John upset because Joe will upset because we need fewer zones.
Deb?
Following up on what Kurt was just asking, on page 38, it talks about ethical concerns and protecting privilege. It's our opinion that lawyers, they may not assist clients in conduct that is in violation of federal criminal law. Will our lawyer be able to advise us?
Because it's in federal criminal, it's a federal criminal offense.
We're trying to establish our wording for the proposed amendments. Sometimes we get legal advice. Would we?
I would say this is, this is one slide from one presentation of one or two lawyers. And so I don't know, that's outside of my purview. I'm not a part of the bar.
Years ago during the medical. I don't think any lawyers went to jail.
So, Brenda?
Thank you. I just wanna also point out that the opposite is true. If we don't have a referendum, finding out from residents what they like, and the majority of the residents show up and vote A at the public hearing, zoning can still do B or C or D. It's non-binding is what I'm, you know, a public hearing is non-binding. You know, we take in at a public hearing what the residents say and how they feel, but then we base our, you know, our vote in our, the outcome on what we feel is best. So, you know, we do have to be cognizant of that, that the, you know, telling the residents that they can come in for a public hearing and we will listen to them. We actually have to be willing to listen to them and let them know, also let them know that it's non-binding. So word of caution.
Thank you. Joe?
I just wanted a little clarity on the referendum. You were talking like it could get re-referendomed. But I don't think if we, if it referendums and it passes and we allow it and we change our zoning regulations and we put a business in town, a year later, somebody can't petition it again and referendum it and kick a new business out. I don't read it like that and I'm trying to clarify if that's correct or if that's a misunderstanding. There should only be one chance for referendum on this item.
The problem is, Joe, is that the 370-something pages do not clarify that. It just says that at any point in time, if you get 10, a petition of 10% of your population, it has to go on the next referendum, the next legal referendum.
Next legal election.
Next legal, it doesn't say, it says regular election, I'm sorry, next legal, regular election. So any November, like I said, the law is, it's, it's, it is what it is unfortunately. But it does not state that it's a one and done thing. That's one of the problems. I'm gonna write that down.
And I think unless they're talking about petition, I don't know if that petition has to take the standard process because to have a referendum, those are, they have to be a public hearing. Is that correct? Or?
Well, you should do have a public hearing.
Okay.
Setting a referendum.
So if they, I think because, because it is written.
It should exempt it.
Exempting it because it doesn't call it out directly. So in effect, the folks, if they were gonna do a citizen, a citizen petition, it could still make it on to the election.
It, because it wouldn't necessarily, because it doesn't say you have to have a public hearing.
Right.
If it gets in within the week.
Right.
You have to put it on the, right?
Right.
And our issues are if we're preparing for an election, for example, ballots have to be ordered a certain amount ahead of time, absentee ballots have to be ordered ahead of time. And if you start getting things like this added on at the last minute, I can just imagine the costs involved.
Right.
As well as trying to get it all processed by the time of the election. There's, there's a lot of implications than just, you know, yeah, we can get it on the agenda, but for a referendum, the question, but it still could cause some major problems.
I think. That may be why they're giving you 60 days. So that if somebody, if there is 10% that comes forward within 60 days, that should give you enough time to do your ballots. Because then it's just the one question. And regardless if it's a pro or against the citizen petition, the wording is the same.
The wording is, it has to be.
It has to be exactly whether it's a pro or, you know, a pro or a against, which I think is fair. And then it also gives the towns the ability to react. So that's why you got that 60-day line. Because now if we get 900 people or 1500 people saying, I wanna petition, then we're done.
I get that. I was, I was thinking of it being along with the election.
Right, right.
That's where the complications could arise. Otherwise, yes, you go through the normal process of making that happen. And, you know, certainly, we're even thinking of this happening. When the budget time comes along, it is costly to run a referendum. So we have to make sure we finance for vote.
Well, I don't think we can do it during a budget because it has to be.
No, no, I mean, we have to.
Bruce?
Just wanted to circle back to one of Joe's points about if it's allowed and then another referendum comes along. There, there is a provision that any candidate established establishments already allowed in the municipality shall not be affected by any vote. So I think, once we get our one, if that was what was decided, one establishment, then there can't be a referendum that shuts it down. Which makes, I think, a certain notice.
Which just then begs the next question. If then in 2024, they say you can have one every 6,000 people, and can we get a petition then to say no more? Yes, thank you for finding that, Bruce. So, all right, if I'm gauging the room and everything that has been said thus far, I think the forward motion at this point is we would not put it automatically on a referendum. If the public wants to petition for that and get the 1,500 signatures that they need within the 60 days, then we would have to put it on a petition. But short of that, we would go forward with planning and zoning, holding public hearings, et cetera. We would handle the ordinance part. I guess the last question that I have, and I don't know how this plays in with your process, is I don't think it's responsible for any of our elected bodies to have any kind of hearing on this without having some sort of like community information, like what it would mean and that. I don't know if that's something you guys would handle in your public hearing part because that to me is not just zoning, but I think people are gonna have questions. So I don't know your opinion on that.
That's interesting.
Because I'm sorry, because as like Brenda said, you know, when you're having a public hearing, think about TVA and all the other stuff that happened, you could potentially have hundreds of people show up and then you're gonna have to listen to all of those people and you guys get the ultimate decision-making, so.
I think that the reason that our, our, our decisions are a little bit different in the sense that we're driven a lot by existing law, a lot by existing, the existing position that we have for, for the regulations that we have in place. And there is a process that you can ask for a variance or a process that you can ask for a change. But in many cases, we may be for or against something, but we're driven by the rules that we have.
Yeah.
So you may have, you know, 5,000 people come out and say, no, we don't wanna do this. But we have to look at it as being, if this is a legal, you know, situation, if I wanna, if I wanna sell bricks or something, I can't stop them because we're gonna get, we'll be sued. I mean, we can decide no, but if there is a precedent in, in the regulations, in particular precedent in regulations in Connecticut, we could be sued for that. So it's different than just an opinion thing. It's, it's opinion and feeling plus the underlying regulations that are there. So it would be, if we were gonna do, in, in our purview, we would, what we would present would not be in the area of, is it good, is it bad? Does it have? Because we don't do that to any other retail establishment. What we could say would be, here are the laws that are, that are consistent. And if we have other examples, we could use those. But I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can even present the pluses and minuses of something that's legal.
Which that's, gets me right back to where we started on this. This legislation allows the town to voice the opinion on whether or not they want to allow the sale or not.
Right, that's correct.
That's, that's the quagmire that we have here. You are a ordinance-driven.
Or regulation-driven.
Regulation-driven. So the regulation says it's legal, but this piece of legislation specifically says it is a town's decision on whether or not they want to sell or not sell.
Right. And I think that the, the, the citizen-driven petition is the way to do that. Because if enough folks say, you know, it's gonna, it could go either way. But I think if that does come to it and the town votes yes, then, you know, assuming that that even happens, then we gotta, then you've got a mandate. If the town votes no, then all this is for naught and we just, we just move forward. So.
All right. So I guess, I think I find some, some comfort in that because I think the 60 days is dangerously close. And I don't know if people will have the opportunity to gather on either side, whatever, to come up with a petition in that 60 days. But. But the location and just knowing how the state works, they're not even going to start issuing licenses until next year. So if people wanted to petition, you guys can start working on this and having public hearings, but people have the opportunity to petition and get it on the next referendum. I think that the crossing line point, as Bruce pointed out, is whether or not, if you guys do zoning, you say we're going to allow it in these areas. If nobody applies for a license and we don't have anybody that is potentially going to be here, people still have that opportunity to come forward and say, I want it on the referendum.
Yeah.
And at that point, it would have to go on the next November election. And that would, I think that would cover. Do you think that would cover?
I think it, I think it would. Um, it's...
You can't turn this around in 60 days.
No, no. And we would, I don't think we would, because we've got other public hearings that are coming up for significant text changes in our regulations. So, yeah, we're not going to have time to deal with this before the election.
Yeah.
So, that's where we are.
All right. Um, does anybody agree or disagree with...
Lou's there.
Lou! Lou, welcome to the, welcome to the meeting, Lou.
Hey, guys. How are you? Sorry, I, I had trouble getting logged on. I finally got logged on. Um, I heard the, uh, tail end of the meeting, I mean, tur, tur, uh, tail end of the discussion regarding, uh, whether or not it needs a, uh, referendum or not. I mean, is that sort of what the discussion has been at this point?
So part of the discussion has been, um, this legislation allows either the town council to decide to put, um, the legalization question on, uh, a regular election referendum, or it allows the town residents to create petitions and gather 10% of the populace to then ask for that question to be on a referendum. Um, the, sorry, reelection. And the general consensus so far around the room has been that people don't want to do a referendum. They want to wait to see if, um, the public initiates it their own. That's the majority of the people right now. I'd say I'd like three to nine.
Point of order, half of the town council wants us to do a referendum. The other half doesn't. Then when you add the planning and zoning who don't actually have a vote on this, that's when we get to no referendum.
Okay. Because, I mean, I just, uh, after, after taking a look at the, uh, at the, uh, statute that was passed, I mean, where was that inside the bill? Because as I said, I mean, I took a look at it, and as it says on, uh, the line 70, uh, 7043 through 7095, I didn't see any, uh, provisions regarding the referendum issue. I thought, I saw that we could pass, that we could pass ordinance or that it'd be a, uh, planning and zoning, um, regulation, but I didn't see any requirements for anything regarding a referendum.
So Lou, it's not a requirement. Um, that's the thing. It's in there that the town council can, um, put it to referendum as a yes-no question with the exact language as, as implied in 1201. And it is also mentioned that the people of the town can initiate a resident petition. And if they get 10% of the population, then we have to put it on the next regular election as a referendum question.
Just to, just to add, it's line 3749 of section 83. So it's a, it's a different part than the ordinance and regulations section.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that reference, just because I'm trying to, trying to follow along. And, uh, those are the only sections I saw that specifically dealt with planning and zoning and, uh, and the town council or, uh, the, uh, town legislative body as far as passing ordinances or regulations regarding it. So I'll take a look at that as well. Thank you.
So I'm assuming that at this point, you don't want to refer, don't want to register an opinion since you weren't part of most of the reading, the meeting. Uh, it's an assumption on my part. Please, uh, let me know if you, if you do or not.
Yeah, I mean, if, I, I, I wasn't part of, like, the, of, uh, most, like, a, a good part, portion of the, uh, of the meeting. But as far as what I've read and what I've reviewed in it, I mean, I, I have some serious reservations regarding, uh, going forward on, on any type of regulations or anything like that. But I will defer and I'll have further discussions. I mean, I know that this is just the first of many meetings that we're going to have on this. So, um, I, that I would, uh, I would talk with our caucus and sort of get an idea as far as where things stand. But, um, that I, I'm, you know, as far as what I've reviewed and as far as my opinion as far as being involved on a law enforcement aspect, I'm, I'm generally not in favor of, of any type of ordinance that it would allow it. But I'm willing to listen to everything.
Um, all right. So, yeah, we kind of talked about where we're not, we're not going to get into the airing of personal opinion on this. It's because it's have to go through zoning.
Right.
We'll hold a public hearing, and at that time, we'll all have the opinion, uh, the ability to state our opinion as residents. Um, this was more just, uh, functionality of the who's doing what of, um...
Roger. Thank you.
You're very welcome. So, uh...
The, from what I see, the, the first, the first action would be, you know, we're going to wait to see if we're able to get 10% of the electors. So it's actually not the, um, the, the population. So we have, what, 9,000 registered voters or 10,000?
10,000. I think it's like 10,150 something.
So if the petition does not come forward before September 2nd, um, then this, you know, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having that on the election. But I think that the next, the next option or the, the next action should be town council enacting ordinances in regards to use. And then we move forward, uh, in regards to, after we get our work done on the things that we already have on the docket to get finished up, then we have the discussion. You know, we could set forward the process to have a public hearing in regards to, um, regulations. But we're not, that's not going to happen until... I almost don't want to do that during December, because everybody wants to be around with family. So I'd say, we'd probably be looking at January to February of next year before we actually get through the process of saying, you know, assuming that everything is, you know, in play, we wouldn't get to this until January or February of next year.
Okay. So, um, I guess then, this meeting has been useful. It has been helpful. I think we've established at least a good idea. I think the town council will still need to talk about, um, whether or not they want to invoke the right to a referendum. But I think the, I think there's probably little chance of that, unless it is, um, brought forward by residents. But we can, we can discuss that. And I think, uh, moving forward, we're, we'll just go with the, unless town council decides they want to put it on the referendum, um, that we would handle the ordinance pieces of it. You guys would handle the zoning pieces of it, the public hearing portion of it. Um, and we all have the ability to go and speak at those public hearings.
Yep.
Um, and, and we can move forward with that assumption right now. And so we'll get on our agenda, um, in the September agenda, a conversation for the town council to lock down, um, our piece of that. And, um, also to start talking about the ordinances on town property. Is everybody pretty good with that? All right. Okay.
Good.
All right, then, um, anybody have anything else to add?
We appreciate the opportunity to come forward and to work as a team on this. It's a, um, it's one of those interesting issues. And I think we played a consistent role. And I think that provides common ground that we know where our lines are. And, you know, it's been a respectful, you know, meeting, and we've talked a lot about a lot of that number of issues. You know, we appreciate the opportunity, and we're always welcome to talk to the town council about big, important things.
Absolutely. And thank you guys for coming, um, and participating in this. Like you said, it's, it's a good opportunity for our boards to get together and, and kind of talk about how we move forward together in who's handling what and that, and just set a clear path for the town. So I appreciate you guys taking time out during the week on a Wednesday. You know, it's not your normal night. Um, and, uh, thank you all for coming and participating. And Mr. Jones?